Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We will have the meeting called to order now that it's 6:30. With that, we'll acknowledge the fact that the opening meetings law act poster is clearly displayed on the wall there. And with that, we'll have the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have a little call.
Murphy.
Yes, sir.
Pikes.
Yes.
Lovren.
Yes.
Miller. With that, moving on to the agenda, we have a couple changes in the agenda that we'll make here. The first thing is that we are going to table the first item of new business, which is the renewal of the police officer's contract. That will compile further information with that. That's the law, compile further information. And then, in addition to that, we are going to have a public comment for the last 20 minutes. After the new business is finished, we'll have 20 minutes of public comment. And we'll move committee reports and administrative reports to next Mondays. Or not next Monday, next meeting. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the meeting of the minutes of May 8th and 18th. And there is a... Oh, yeah, approval of the agenda. So we need a motion to approve the agenda. Pikes? Lovren? Miller?
Yes.
Okay, with that, approve the meeting minutes of May 8th and May 18th with one correction if I read that right. I believe on the May 8th meeting, if you look at the second page of the meeting minutes there, there was a little confusion about the part, the roof has been replaced. And we accepted the lower bid, which was to replace the roof with the original roof materials. And it was misstated in here as being that we were going to replace the roof with shingles. And I don't know if that was a big concern or whatever, but the roof has been replaced with the original material that was there before. Only new, of course, metal where metal was and roof, single for single was. And we got that at the reduced, probably about $12,270. Oh, okay. So the total payment there was $12,470.50.
Make the motion to approve the...
Motion made by Murphy.
My second.
Seconded by Pikes. Lovren? Miller?
Yes.
Murphy? And Pikes? Okay. The next item would be approve of the claims, bills paid in June. Oh, yeah, I've got the May 18th one, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 18th.
Motion made by Miller. Seconded by Lovren. Miller?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes, sir.
Pikes?
Yes.
And what? Okay. The next item would be approval of the claims of the bills paid in June 2022.
So this 12 that we paid and they had not deposited our check, what is that?
When we sent that check out to them, they had told us they'd never received it. So we waited a while because there was that snowstorm when that first went out. And Chantel would like to go ahead and stop it, which will cost us $25, just so there is not out there floating around or comes back to haunt us later. So she'd like their permission to stop it. It'll cost $25, and then we'll take care of the payment to them.
Make a motion to approve of...
Motion made by Murphy and seconded by Miller. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
Pikes?
Yes.
Lovren? And Miller?
Yes.
The next item on the list is, it would be to go to old business. Okay, in old business, moving on, the thank you, special thank you to the Main Street Traders for the flooring. As you walked in, if you came in from the east door, you noticed there's new flooring there in the adjacent room as well. In addition to that, they supplied us with a cash register that is being used at the pool for keeping track of resources there. Then, one source manager, one source is like an office managing supplier, Mr. Sherman, the manager there, went through that cash register, updated it, and got it all maintained. And now it's up and fully functional and being used daily at this swimming pool. So thanking for that and those generous contributions toward the town. Okay, next item of old business would be the update on the street repairs. Guess I'll have to defer to Mr. Pikes on that.
I contacted Tim Miller to look at the situation of the water coming down from Highway 12. And on Second Street, it's called Tim West Second Street. It's owned by Fred Miller and the Rosen. And he came up with a...
Can't hear you.
Making a drain box there, right? I guess it used to be the old openers place. So we're gonna make a... We're gonna make a drain box right to the south of Miller's property. The size is roughly three by four, we haven't decided yet. I did get an estimate from Mr. Arns for a total of $5,000 providing materials, 160 feet of 12-inch pipe and the materials. And the back hole, skid loader, labor, comes up to $5,000. So that's part of it. The other part is that we gotta make a box culvert, which I've asked a number of people to give me some estimates. So I just used what I thought, because I'm in the construction business, kind of gave a rough number of concrete and building a box culvert, about $1,200, give or take. I talked to Keith Buschamp to make a metal grate for the top of this box culvert to, so people, if they drive off the road, they ain't gonna collapse in that. And he said he could do it for $500. So with Tim Arns' bill at $5,000 and this estimate of $1,700, it comes up to about $6,700. So that would eliminate the problems that Mr. and Mrs. Miller are having from all the water coming down and from St. Rose's side. And I talked to Dustin and conferred with Mr. Evans that if we take a patrol or a pedaler and dig a trench on the east side of that road, that we would have a drain coming from the St. Rose into that ditch and go down to the road to the storm sewers away there. So that's what we have. So the bid is $6,700 to construct that. I talked to Mr. Arns about it. He said he could probably get it if we approve it. And we get somebody to build the box culvert, he could start digging. But anything that goes on to Mr. and Mrs. Miller's property would be on their expense, you know, in front of their driveway and stuff. So we're gonna have, you know, the box culvert, the concrete, the grate, and piping and stuff that goes across their property would probably have to be expensed from the homeowner. I don't know if this... Okay? So I guess I conferred with you, but I didn't handle prices when I talked to you the other day. So that's what we're looking at. So it's up to the board if they want to eliminate the problem there. Otherwise, we're still gonna have the same problem of water coming down and getting in people. We have another spot in town I haven't figured out what we should do yet, but I'm studying it to see what we can do. So any input from you guys? Jason?
How much water with 12-inch pole, 12-inch pipe, how much water we'll take? We'll go through a 12-inch pipe?
Well, I talked to Mr. Arns about it. He said a 12-inch pipe, we take everything that we done in on the St. Rose side and dug a ditch. So water ain't coming from St. Rose is adding to the problem. The ditch on the St. Rose side will go down the ditch and get down to the intersection to the storm sewers way it's supposed to go. But there ain't no ditch right now. It's just kind of almost level from St. Rose's and that's just years of...
My concern is we put a 12-inch pipe, we still don't handle it.
Right.
My concern would be if we put a 12-inch pipe in there?
Yeah. We'll have to... It might, but we'll see. But the culvert's gonna be up high. The water from St. Rose is gonna be a mile from Mr. and Mrs. Miller's property. We'd have to dig that water and divert it down the road before it gets crossed. So... Any questions or...
Yes?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
When the water gets across the street after it goes off of Miller's property and goes across the street to the north, where does that dump it?
It's gonna dump into the storm sewer right north of Mr. and Mrs. Miller's property. There's a storm sewer right there on whatever street that it is.
Where does that dump?
Where does the sewer lead to is basically what he's asking. Where's it dumped at? Where does it dump out of?
Where's the sewer ending?
It's gonna dump down past, well, where Mrs. Leader is, there's another storm sewer right on the other side of that road. And it goes down into that pasture that used to be, I don't know who owns it now, I think Tracy Miller or somebody not Tracy Miller.
Oxford.
Yeah. So it just runs down in there, dispersed in that pasture.
How do you look at, where that thorns? It's already a pretty good ravine down there. Where that thorns?
Well, there is, but they got two storm sewers right there and it has to go down to the most part. So if we get a heavy rain, the storm sewers take what comes off the road and takes it down and goes to the north, to the north. And it's just like, it's like over in Danse's, the same thing. The water comes off that street and goes down into that, that end of that road and it goes down to that pasture. And by that time, it's kind of dispersed on the ground.
Would it be possible to place the rock down there?
Well, I'm sure we'd have to do something to, so it don't wash out. We'd have to put some rock or some kind of substance to go on there after. But the first thing, we'd have to get this thing down for them and do the St. Rose's side. And then when we have to look at that north side of that street to see how much drainage we'd have to come down there.
So essentially, you'll add to the amount that it's costing now? Because you'll have to put rock in? Essentially, you'll have to add to the cost?
Well...
To get rock and things down.
We got, we got...
This is like phase one of X amount of phases.
We have pressure rock out at that property that we own or come. And that's what we've been using on some people's plots where they have it drained out some bad. So that's, that's what we've been utilizing until it gets some worse for them. And we got concrete out at City Dam, City Dump. And if you want to pay to have somebody grind it, we can grind it and still have some more rock and gravel that we could use for barriers like that. Any other questions?
I can make that motion.
Motion made by Miller?
My second.
Seconded by Murphy. And it would be... Pikes?
Yes.
Lovren? Miller?
Yes.
And Murphy? Good. Okay, moving on to the next item of business. And we'll put the microphone back to Mr. Pikes because he was on that site today. And he can update us on the Second Street repair.
So I looked at the project over here on Second Street. They've had most of it all cut out. They had to dig two foot of ground out of there because it was saturated. And they poured, back when they did it, they poured cement right on top of dirt, which any contractor knows that you gotta have, if you've got eight inches of cement, you gotta have eight inches of crushed packing of soil underneath. Which that didn't have. So I talked to Mr. Stevens. He said they're digging out two foot of it. They brought ground in from Todd Tany's, some gravel that he has crushed up. And he's doing a pack, so he dug out two foot, so he packed it about, you know, six, seven times in that one spot and put rebar all the way across. And every two feet, put the rebar into the existing concrete that we got with epoxy that they use for state roads and eight inches thick because of the trucks that come over here from Katon's, the grocery store, and the lumberyard. So they're working at it. The way it looks, it looks like they're probably gonna be pouring in this week sometime. And then we're gonna have to stay off of it for seven, 10 days. Then they're gonna take, they call it a spider router. It goes and follows a crack and they dig a V edge into it. And then they put tar and some other stuff in there for expansion so it don't expand any further. And that's basically what's happening out there right now.
I have a question. So today I went and looked at my lot. I just replanted the grass alongside that road. I spent over 100 bucks putting grass down there and it's all tore up. There's a big old hole where they're driving through my lot. I, my lot's not open to them because I have to have my customers in there. Because when you guys barricaded that end up, we moved it because there was accidents gonna happen. I asked Donna, I asked Mike, we moved it back because trucks can't get in and out of it. I mean, at dinnertime, I have 50 people there. My parking lot is my parking lot for my customers, not for their heavy equipment to drive through and bust it all up. So I would appreciate they would replant the grass, fix that side up over there.
I won't speak for the council, but myself, I think if we ruin any of your property, we'll fix it up. Okay?
I just would like that fixed because I just got it all spring getting up here.
We're not saying, I'm saying for myself, the rest of the board's gotta answer this too. Myself, if they wreck anything, we'll fix it up the way it's supposed to be. Okay? You guys agree with that? So I guess it's gonna be fixed up after they did done.
Okay.
Okay? And what they use, we're gonna have to jump, put black dirt in there. And I don't know, did you have it seeded or is this rock or what was it?
We took a drill through there and then we had to replant it again because it washed out at first degree.
We'll seed it, but we're not guaranteeing it's gonna grow.
Yes.
We'll put seed on top of it and write it in, do it like, like it's supposed to, okay?
All right.
Does that require a motion? So it's recorded? Does that require a motion when you're gonna repair everything?
Well, I think it's probably up to Stevens to know if they wrecked it.
Yeah, the contractor will patch up anything that makes it work.
So you wanna go ahead with the, the re-milling thing is only there?
Are we talking about that, that line or that?
Nope, Sewer Lagoon.
I had contacted Mr. Miller, the Sewer Lagoon update. We routed a couple different turns up here by, well, Jim Murphy has that property. We're gonna stay in the ditch and go up into the, if anybody's familiar, up on that right away on that road going north. As soon as we get into where the real water is, we're gonna go in the middle of the street because there's water lines on both sides of that street. It's on the west and on the east. So I talked to Mr. Miller and he had a guy up here. And he decided that to cause any problems and headaches and any other unforeseen things, it'll go downright. I don't know exactly where it is, folks, so it's where the real water is, that hole is, I think, right there. Go in the middle of the street and go all the way up to where the asphalt quits up by Jesse Jensen and what used to be Margaret Arns's place. I don't know who owns that now. Then they're gonna go into the ditch of the right of way on the west side and follow that all the way out to where the cement plant was. Go underneath that road, stay on the east side of 121. And then they're gonna go, when they get across to Dale Gunther's property, I don't know exactly where that is, before the superintendent must live in Vern Witter's house, is that right? Before you get to his spot, it's a straight shot west to you hit Dale Gunther's property. Dwayne Gunther's given us permission. I should back up. Down there by the sewer plant, we talked to Mr. Ostamore. And we were thinking about coming straight west and then going across his property, but he gave us permission to go on the east side of his house, along that tree line. Stay in that ditch, do not touch, do not touch. We're not gonna touch none of them cedar trees from the baseball field. They're gonna stay right where they're at. We'll go on Randy Phillips's property on the east side of that fence line in his pasture. And go all the way back, I don't know exactly how many feet, and then they're gonna cut across the city property back there, behind them wells, pass some wells, and get back on Randy Phillips's property and go straight north till we hit that road where Brian Riewhouse and Jim bet the property. Go underneath the road, go to the right of way, and go back up the way I just described it. So nobody's getting affected by it. The right of way of the road is the right of way of the road. So nobody's, nobody's gonna be out or have anything tore up. He's still working on grants and Lincoln is very dragging their heels on the financing. We are in compliance, we are not behind anything. As long as they seen that, we got it surveyed, we got it routed. The guy that was here with Mr. Evans and myself seemed pretty positive that everything's going the right way. The only holdup right now is Lincoln. USDA, that's where the holdup is. We are still in compliance, we're not gonna get penalized, we're not gonna get fined. We got the route, surveying is all done, I think, pretty much, isn't it? So it's, just gotta wait for the money to come across. And he'll let us know as soon as he gets it. Any questions?
I haven't been here in a few months, sorry. I'm glad to be back, I guess, but do you have like a map? I'm not very good because I don't know about that guy's house to this, there are trees to over, cross the road that way to up to ditch this way to cross the road. I don't do that. Do you have like a map?
We have a map. It was out there before, but we'll get you a map.
We'll get you a map.
That'd be great.
And hopefully an updated one. When we get the updated one, we'll just...
So we're running from the plant here, plant the Sewer Lagoon out that way?
Yep.
Plant here, run the line all the way out to the lagoon out there.
Exactly.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
You have a question?
Oh, yes.
How many substations, pump stations?
We're gonna have to have one down by the sewage place. And he said there possibly be two lift stations inline, or inline pump stations. And they're gonna make it kind of like a gate valve. So it's like a thrusting thing that it'll take it faster down the line. But if they ever go out, all we have to do is shut off the two gate valves, pull it out, and replace a new one. So it's not, no major construction on that. Once that line is in, there's two gate valves that we gotta pull out if they ever go bad. And Dustin knows about them too. So we're just gonna have to decide if we wanna have a couple spares on hand because it might last 30, 40 years and all of a sudden they don't make that size of a lift station to go. So maybe that's something that we have to decide. Any other questions?
Okay, the next item of business, if there are any questions, is the update from Big Iron Sales.
Well, for the most part, everything got sold. I know the street grinder, we didn't really get what we wanted to get out of it. But the main part of the question that Brett told me, or reason was because that was too big for pretty much everybody that's called in, just like it was too big for us, for our city equipment to handle it. So we ended up only getting $2,400 for that. But otherwise, everything went for a fairly fair price. I mean, nothing over the top, but it probably would've went. I don't know if we could've got anything anymore out of it anywhere else, neither. We sold a two-wheel tractor with a grappler, a milling machine, a 73 asphalt distributor truck, a pneumatic nine-wheel roller, a power chip spreader, a three-point spring tine drag, three-point blade, king cutter, three-point rototiller, a shop belt roller, another three-point blade. Sold a five-foot sickle mower, a 78 dump truck, and a 94 Ranger two-wheel drive. Any questions or anything?
Is everything, everything's gone, goes on, or there's still items left out? Everything on the list is sold?
No, everything's sold, yes.
I have a question. When, when did that happen?
Um, the settlement date is Wednesday, the 31st of May.
So when we took like bids to sell a refrigerator out of the kitchen and advertised all of that for sale to the entire community, was this run the same way? Like I said, I've been gone for six months, I don't know.
This was put on bigiron.com.
Okay, but you can't just unload city property without notice? We advertised and took bids for the car, right? Advertised and took bids for the kitchen equipment that went out in the pop machine?
Yeah. It was acknowledged in the minutes that they would be sold at Big Iron. So it's a...
So what was the grand, what was the grand total that came in then? Does anybody know?
Eighteen, with minus the commission, the pool was $18,575.60. Oh, sorry, $18,557.60.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Well, it seems to have sold off street repair equipment that you can get what you considered it old. How soon before you want to replace it and what kind of project it costs? You got $18,000 in, but what, you're gonna spend $70, $80 some later? For what? For what? Why did you sell? You just gave, you know, like the... You sold equipment to help, did you buy, are we gonna be replacing it? Or is this something where now you're just gonna hire contractors to use their equipment?
So our plan for the town, because the road is to hire contractors to do everything?
That's more expensive for the city.
We haven't made an executive decision on that process yet and we'll move it on. Okay? All right. With that, we'll move on to the next item of business, which would be the update of our soft part. And of course, we did that, right? We, it's all taken care of. If you looked over there, it's very, very nice. There's metal where metal was and asphalt where asphalt it was. And the roofs are in great shape. So that's all taken care of. And I, you know, Mr. Jensen, I believe, when I walked around afterwards, been around contractors a little bit in my life, he did a very good job as far as I could see of cleaning up and picking up the park after and making sure it was ready to be park-worthy after he was done with his job. So committed for that, did a great job. With that, moving on to CBG grant. Obviously, there's CBG money out there we're in the process of using. A couple things, getting bids on getting the concrete taken care of again because it was a while for that to get from. We want to be able to get access from the shelter to the gazebo, to the restroom. We've got a bid on some cutouts to cut out in the corners for handicap access. And then we're working with a couple contractors who have not yet given us a bid to remove and then make a new ramp here, a nice handrail on it. And then, of course, obviously, to replace both the doors. Have a lot of feelers out for that and not a lot of responses out to get two handicap doors. And those taken care of as well. So that's still a work in progress and we'll continue to proceed on that process. With that, the next item would be the pool opening. And as obviously as you see, heard, or other... And as obviously as you see, heard, or otherwise noted, there, there's people in the pool. And so the pool is open, the pool is fully functional, uh, the pool is, uh, is, is being used. Uh, um, just for a note on that pool opening is, uh, made special accommodations with our lifeguards and arrangements so that Thursday night is family pool night. And so we'll be staying open until nine o'clock on, uh, Thursday evening. So please encourage families to, to come down and take advantage of that. Um, obviously, there are working families in our community that can't get home, or get home six o'clock. And by the time they get supper eaten or do whatever they're gonna do, it was too late. So we went out of, out of the way a little bit to make sure that there's at least one night a week until nine o'clock where families can go down and take advantage of our, our pool. Okay. Moving on to new business. The first item of new business, and I was impossible purchase of a skeletal grappler for the skid loader. And I'm gonna defer to Dustin on that.
No, no, I'm sorry. We're not gonna go any further. We're gonna have to address this non-renewal of the police officer. Because enough, enough is enough with the hate and discontent going on.
We've been tabled till the next week.
You were elected on the premise that there were misdeeds happening in the mayor's office, Bob, okay? And as it turns out, there was nothing.
None of this is on the agenda.
No, you're not gonna shut me up. I have freedom of speech, Bob. No, you're gonna address this issue. What about addressing the video?
I'll be issue.
Are we gonna address the video? Are we gonna address, how about an apology to the chief that he got the grant? And you all accused him that he wasn't gonna let.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item of business.
So the guys you wanna fire.
Purchase of skeletal grappler. Skeletal grappler skid loader. If you would please, Dustin, I don't have those numbers, okay? I know you told me, but. I know you love this. Sorry, Dustin.
Basically, I got a price from Jerry Stefan. Uh, one is a seventy-two inch, and I think the other is an eighty-four inch. They're both within about a hundred dollars of each other, but they're right around, uh, forty-seven, forty-eight hundred dollars. Be mainly using it for cleaning up trees and brush, I guess. I guess that's all you're gonna be talking about.
You still rent that skid loader, correct? And fit on that skid loader?
Yes, it'll fit on the skid loader that we already have, or that we're leasing, so. Just Jerry right now. You want a couple more? Okay, if I can round this up.
Now make sure that we're talking apples, apples.
Okay.
The same size.
Sure.
Some of them might have grapplers like this and some.
Sure. Okay.
We're moving on to the next item, which would be, Dustin will look in that further. Thank you very much, Dustin, for that. And I did note that the bucket on the skid loader is eighty inches. So the eighty-four, the other eighty inches.
It's either eighty-two or eighty.
Eighty-two.
Bucket's eighty, but it, uh, grabs a sort of, you have to be eighty-two or eighty-one.
Yeah. So we wanna probably go with the larger one, find the one to get, uh, comparable bids there. So moving on to the potential sewer liner.
So when the guys were here cleaning out our sewer lines, I mentioned to him, how do, how does towns do this when they got four towns on the sewer? And he said they make a product that's a liner that fits into our existing sewer, sewer line. And it's warranty for a hundred years. And I kinda looked at him, I said, a hundred years? He said, yes. He said they can go from manhole to manhole, slip them in there, and seal it around a wall of our existing sewer. And I said, what's the advantages of that? He told me, he said, when people come in and they wanna move their, redo their city streets, they don't have to dig them up. A hundred years is a long time. If they can guarantee that that liner will stay intact and we don't have to worry about our sewer lines going bad. So I asked some information here, and I'm kinda apologizing because he didn't send me that price of this stuff. But I do have a phone number, and this is just a new business, and I could get that for next month's meeting. But he, he says it's nine to a hundred-year warranty on it. And I have a sheet here at all the towns. And I said, what if we just wanna do one or two? He said, that's no problem. He told me he's working in, I'll just pick two towns off here. One in Cozad and one in, in O'Neal. They do it, they put it in, get it sealed up. They got another crew that does one. So you can do one street, you can do fifty streets, you can do two streets. So it ain't like we're object to do the whole town. So some streets in this town does not have a sewer line on, some have a couple with manholes in. And we had our manholes done, I don't know how many more we got left to do. I mean, that's something that Bob or Donna could tell me, Dustin. But he said, uh, they go from manhole to manhole and put the sealer in there. It's, it's kinda, kinda nifty looking stuff. He showed it to me. And, uh, I think it'd be well worth checking into it if we can save our, our man, our sewer line without digging everything up and have to redo the whole street. He says that it's cost-effective, it's a hundred years, I don't know the price of it. I will come and get that information from you. I might just have him come up to the meeting and give us a, a presentation on what that stuff is. Is that what you kinda guys wanna do?
Yeah, there's a price per foot on there and a mobilization on that bid form that Jason gave.
Just, um, just kinda budgeting it out, he said to that paperwork, I thought it was in your tab now. On the bottom, that one you just got from Jason.
I must've lost it.
The one you just got from Jason.
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's thirty-eight dollars a foot or something.
Yeah, it's eight foot, eight inches, thirty-eight dollars a limit foot. Service reinstated is a hundred, a hundred fifty dollars each. Mobilization crew for equipment is six thousand to ten thousand. I think what we need to do is have him come up here and he can give us the whole, the whole input on this and what the product looks like. I mean, I'm just reading it off what he sent here. I just assume have him come up and show us the product.
There were two or three critical areas that you probably should address soon.
Pardon?
There were two or three critical areas, they said we should address soon, right?
Yes, yes, there's some that, that sewer guy said there's some areas in town that are really bad. If we could address those right away, we never have to worry about that sewer line on the streets.
Larry, I have a question. So this is the company that was driving around town, looking at all the manholes.
Well, they're the ones that blew out the sewer lines and checked our insides. And everybody was notified to, you know, put plastic over the basement stool and stuff like that. And yeah, they're a company, Johnson and Johnson's from Carney, wanted to get our manholes, put them in. And then they came with the machine and they, uh, went to check all our manholes, our, our lines out and stuff.
And you detected some problem areas or?
Well, there's some problem areas. He showed me, but he's gonna give us a, he hasn't got the data sheet on which roads or which lines are bad. He said there's about three or four of them that are pretty bad, we'll have to do something.
And so this liner, is that something that goes like throughout the whole city or just in the problem areas?
Just from manhole to manhole. So if you got a manhole over there and you got another manhole over here, they can put that, so that whole thing is, is secure. So I just assume have him come up and give us a demonstration and that, and have a sort of the pro, product itself. You guys want me to come up? Are you on board? Okay, I'll give him a call. I'll give him a call and see, maybe next month we can get him up here, okay? And I'll keep you guys informed of what I did. Yes?
Is there more than one company probably?
I, I, all I have talked to is the guy that was doing our lines here, so that's all I know. I don't know if there's another person, I won't even know where to look, to the truth. He said that, he said that they've been doing it for years, so all I can go is what he told me.
They may have an idea who they're competitive for.
Exactly, to get a competitive price, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's something that we'd have to ask him and see how many people actually do it in the state of Nebraska too. Okay? Any other questions?
I used to be a plumber here, do a liner in those drain lines. It's gonna make it, that hole smaller, so it'd be smaller so the sewers might go through it. So then we plug up a lot sooner. How, how, how thick is that liner for the hole you have?
Well, that's something that we'll have to ask that gentleman that comes up here and gives us a demonstration. Okay, I have no idea how thick, I don't know how thick that wall is. Okay, that'd be a question, that'd be a question we'd ask him when he comes up and gives a presentation.
That liner on the outside or inside?
Inside. They go down from the manhole and it's kind of a, he told me it's kind of a flexible thing that goes in there. And then they got a camera with a heat, a heat rail thing that goes, rails that goes around and heats it on to our existing manhole, our sewer line. So it's something new that I've never heard it before, but I was, maybe that would help our city out. So it was, a hundred years is a long time. And I, he's, he's got a, a list of towns here that they've done. So you can look to call them guys and see how they're satisfied with it. Some did it in twenty-twenty, all the way till present day, I tell you.
So if the process done it is to like prevent leaks or what's the purpose of the liner?
For digging out the sewer, the sewer line when it cracks, it seeps into the ground. And then we got a big mess, we have to dig up everything to clean it up. The EDA won't like it if we have a sewage leak, just like a gasoline leak at Megan's Place, a gas leak, they have to dig up so much area. So this is a sealer that goes inside and protects our liner. Any other questions? Yeah, I think this goes back to Bob now.
A couple meetings. Back we had, uh, Mr. From the bank, Mr. Cooper was here and talked to us about the potential of, uh, of doing something to generate revenue to, uh, get this pool thing underway. So with that being said, if we follow through on his recommendation, insight, and potentially looking to get, uh, a loan through him or either through a different process. If we can secure that half percent sales tax, um, by, by ordinance down the road, we'll need a town hall meeting and other events, whatever. Just wanna know the council's, uh, input, um, and a vote so we can potentially follow through on that process of developing ordinance and then having a town hall meeting. And then we have to have, or have a vote then to enact that half percent sales tax. The benefit of, you know, the sales tax, of course, versus the property tax is that, you know, this way we get other people that come to our town to help us pay for the expense of getting the pool taken care of. And then we got to keep in mind, of course, I don't know what the sunset date is on the pool, four hundred thousand dollar money, but I know we can't leave that, go too long, it's gonna be.
You still use that, that twenty percent that we get from our loss plus this half percent. And I had a good conversation with Mr. Cooper, and he stated that camp or bonding agency with the twenty percent that we get from our existing one percent, and this new half percent if it goes through, it cover, we got like four hundred, I think you guys heard that, four hundred and some thousand dollars in the bank. If we don't use it before it's a firm, the first twenty twenty-four, it goes to foundation. So we wanna make sure that we get this thing done and get it passed. And I'm sure the public's gonna have a lot of questions, what's gonna go on. But if we can, if we can secure that half percent, like Bob, that half percent plus that twenty percent we're getting, we'll cover, and Mr. Cooper said, I think we would cover a loan at the bank or at the bonding agency, whichever we decide to do. So we cover that for how many years and it takes to pay off?
Right, so we, we have a full grant that's been approved. We have, uh, resources that we can have potential access. We just need to finish off this process with, uh, hopefully get a half percent additional sales tax so we can generate the revenue with the lost money so we can get it paid for, get it done.
Bob, there's another step on that there. You said you can pass it, I've passed it, we can get out.
I agree.
There's another step, right?
Yeah, well, there's more, yeah, lots, lots of steps. I just want the approval to go ahead.
What's important is that you have to have a vote on when you pick them.
Right, yeah, we'll have a vote.
I didn't hear that mention.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll have a vote, yeah, yes.
So your, your, your program exists, you wanna put on a ballot, and you're taking this up there?
To go through the process of creating an ordinance rules. And will allow us to put the ordinance in for public comment, we'll have a hearing at that point in time. And if we're approved with it in the city, then we'll move on to put it on the ballot for an election period to vote.
So I have a promotion to move forward with looking at, for raising the sales tax for a pool, which would include a public comment, and further votes.
Miller and, and second, I wish, would that, Walter? Miller?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
And, fine.
Yes.
Okay. The next item of business on the new business would be the purchase of a street lining painting machine. You have in your packet, one of a multitude of things there. There's everything, as you can obviously see on there, from, uh, from a little stick that has a spray can that you can roller on and a, a painting stick kind of machine. There's a machine above that that has four wheels and you can roll and that kind of deal, and then the paint's below. Um, there are additional, um, types, of course, there are, um, the most expensive one that I saw is a machine that of course has a laser tracking device where you lay out a line and laser tracks, so you make perfectly straight lines. It's powered by, I think it was a DeWalt or somebody that has three batteries that are, so it's cordless and rechargeable, around six thousand dollars. There are three thousand dollar machines that have a gas engine, that you start up the engine and the gas engine runs a compressor. There's electric machine where you physically plug it into an extension cord, and there's some that have, uh, other ones that have, they're cheaper. But I just wanna know, first of all, primarily, we do more streets painted. And then what kind of, uh, price range do you wanna have for us to go to proceed forward on this process? I, I just entirely agree. There's so many different varieties and shapes and forms, you just need to have.
Well, I know the, the lines from the curb got coming out. So how do we get up that curb? I mean, I seen where Mr. Merkel came to it, he did a very nice job. So how do you get a machine like this to paint a straight line? What do you do when we get to the curb?
Still involves some hand painting, I'm sure.
And, you know, in the handicap areas and stuff like that, some of that shouldn't have to be done by hand. Unless this'll just do that, the diet and the lines, the people who work, work the floor today.
It just puts some cardboard down or something and just spray on that and then they can do it that way.
And discuss the pool, whatever.
Something, something we could use, multi, multi tool.
So we paint the curb, curb too, you know, for handicaps and, and somewhere with, uh, excess water and stuff.
So airless thing, or?
There, most of them are in the range of, unless we get something extravagant, you know, twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars for the airless spray.
How would we, how do we use it?
Dustin, any, what do you think? Do you have any input?
As far as what would be best, I, I guess I don't know.
I could check with Chairman Williams in Yankton and see what they got, get some literature on it. And if we make cardboard, you know, put on three, paint the whole street, just a marker to the public, you'd have to say those cardboard pieces on whatever we have to do.
Would it make sense to check with Crofton Lumber here in town that also sells paint that, you know, the taxing, the small town also includes them because they are a local business for their, for their native vers?
We, we do try to use local, so we will, yeah. Get, check with Crofton Lumber.
We'll check a couple different parts. I mean, you want something that's not gonna cover some, it's gonna be all, all, how many happens to years to come.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Carter?
As a former paint contractor, uh, as far as the writing machine, can it be more feasible for Brett to run? Uh, I mean, they're, you know, more cheap for them. It's something that we're not gonna use a lot.
Right.
So I can, well, I mean, as far as an airless machine, I've got, I've got a way to, you know. And then as far as an airless machine, I've got, I've got nothing to, you know, for any required items that come through the roof. Work with that.
Thank you very much. If that's okay, I'll look into the rental costs too. I think that probably the, I don't know if there's a rental place in Yankton, but I'll look into the rental.
I think cardboard.
Right. Okay. I do have a question. We sold off all the road repair equipment and we're going to do everything by contract. And we, we've drilled our maintenance staff down to one guy. How, why would we even consider purchasing a line striping machine when our asphalt deteriorating, falling apart? The roads are swept anyways and I'm just saying, we're already going to contract everything out. Why are we buying a piece of equipment like people have said, we're only going to use sparingly?
Yeah, that's a good point. Maybe we should look into renting.
Yeah.
I really appreciate the options and suggestions. Thank you.
So I'll.
Well, we had the jig.
Right. Yeah, and I, Dustin has looked and I don't, we don't find the jig, do we? No. But either way, if, if we had the jig for the rented machine, that'd be fine too. If we just had to jig to do the roller thing to it, we'll, we'll look into those options. Yep. Yeah, and we do have, we do have two additional part-time employees that we hired from the city that are, who'll be available to do those things. Yep. Well, we didn't, that was going to be my report, now wait till. That's right. Okay, with that being the last item of new business, we will move into, to public comments. We're going to have public comment, it's going to be limited to, to 20 minutes total. And, and so Mr. Pikes is going to take care of that, I believe. Somebody else wants to. We're trying to limit individuals' comments to, to three minutes. That way we'll have an opportunity for six people to speak even during transition time. And so we'll have an opportunity to do that. At public comment, of course, obviously we're seeking and looking for, for information, of course, obviously that's why we're having public comment. I guess the expectation is that it's not going to be a question and answer session at this point in time. We're looking for information and seeking information to help us make informed decisions down the, down the road. With that, does somebody have a three minute timer? Yep, definitely. You got three minutes? I guess you're all mature adults, you can decide what the order is going to be. Okay.
Katie, Katie. Thank you. I'm from the staff at the Crofton Rescue Squad. I would like to respectfully ask the council to reconsider not, to reconsider letting go of our police department. I remember in the past administration, the time that we did not have a police officer. And we feel that we are left out there in the cold and we didn't do a lot of extra calls that weren't usually in our directive. Wellness checks and things like that that our police officers do do. We have had a good relationship with both officers. They've been respectful and it's very nice to pull up on the scene and have the officers there because we know that the scene is controlled then. And we, we found in the past, if you have to wait for center, if we have a patient that's, that we are concerned about as far as a danger to ourselves, which we have had, waiting for somebody to come from center is not a, a good idea. And we have left Crofton with the intention of calling names and PD if something happens. But it is a, it's a tough thing to ask the crew to do. We are not, we do not carry weapons in them, in the ambulance and we are not going to start. It's just not a good thing. With the climate of the, not necessarily the community, but the world, we, we run all the way down to Pleasant Valley on 81 and all the way out to Devil's Nest. We have the potential for a dangerous call anytime. I know that most of the officers come here and it's not just the danger part of it, it's the. Well, we've had to EPC some patients and so we work with law enforcement to that. And it's a lot easier for the patient when he's not a large, and a large, that they don't have to wait to. There's also unintended deaths in our area and the officers are, are helpful with that.
Katie, if you had to call ECP, you know, want aggregate response time would be?
We wouldn't call ECP unless we're going to Yankton. We have to call center because we are in Max County. So it all depends on where the officer is at that time and sometimes they don't come. We, on fire calls, they have not come, they've shut, uh, shuttled it off to state control. And they could be as far away as to city. So we make a decision right there in hand. I personally, I've gotten along with the officers that work for us, for the city. And if that's something that the city decides to change, I hope we don't have another two year wait.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you for allowing us to just come before you. I have some information, I think I presented this before, but it's just concerning on our ordinance, but we do not have a procedure in writing in the law since we have it in writing about our police officers, it's missing from our city ordinance. So it's in section 17107, which is the state level. Part B says the city council shall by ordinance adopt rules and regulations governing removal, demotion, suspension, with or without pay of a police officer included to the police. And it goes on how you're going to do it, why you're doing it, and it says, the city council shall establish an ordinance and procedures for acting, you know, if there's accusations, provisions, put it in writing. They have to be able to have an attorney present, they have to be able to have an audience with you guys. There hasn't been any of that and we're aware of it, that there's any accusations out there. But it's just concerning this little piece, so we got the other ordinance that's listed out, but it's just missing this section of how we're going to do that procedure. Instead of just something arbitrarily done because they need to be able to have representation and say, hey, you know, why are you wanting to, you know, not happen in here? Because it's their jobs in line, they're not going to be able to get a job somewhere if a city is accusing them of something or, you know, why didn't they let you go? You know, that kind of thing. Have to have a, a way to defend themselves. So, can I give that to you? But that's what's missing from the, our state ordinance, so. Thank you.
Question and answer period, I don't know if this is a question or not, but if you, if you change the agenda so that we can speak. I mean, we didn't change the agenda to recognize that Chief Carter got the grant for us. No apologies to the man, anything? Okay, no problem. The video that everybody has seen all over town and the addressing of that content. You guys seen it all, no? So basically, you've kind of forgotten what a representative government is. The United States is a representative democracy. This means our government is elected by our citizens. That means everybody in this room voted for one of you except for Ms. Miller, who was appointed. You seem to have lost that process. The government is elected by the citizens, the citizens vote for their government and these officials represent the citizens' ideas and concerns in government. We're not seeing that. We're seeing you guys do whatever you want. Meeting after meeting after meeting, you're doing life, been here for three years, come to meetings every year for three years and I watch Larry Quets deny road repair every year. Now we're down to, we're going to willy-nilly just hire contractors to do it. What's it going to take to, to change things and bring us back together and be a cohesive unit? That's all.
I just have a question about the two, four tenants that were hired. If that was ever voted on or decided or felt to be bad? Because normally if you hire city employees, it has to be voted on and brought up and talked about, discussed. I haven't seen it in any of the meetings, just hire employees.
Thank you for having us, Tom. I've lived in Crofton, I've owned it for 50 years. I have never seen our streets in such bad shape. And I realize to solve the problem, it's going to take a little bit of money. So what I've got to say is not short and sweet, but maybe short and sour to some ears. If we wait until we have the money to do streets, then they're never going to get done. I think it is time for the council to take serious consideration for running a bond issue to cover the streets and sewers. The thing is, if we don't do it, I'm almost sure that they're going to run another bond issue for the schools. If they run a bond issue there and it passes, we don't have a chance. So it's my thinking, if, if you see the, it's feasible, let's just say they're running a bond. Thank you.
Well, I really didn't prepare anything to say to you guys except, I will hope that you guys will reconsider on replacing the officer that you guys have here in Crofton. I've already seen that clearly you have decided that disposition is going to be open because there is a job description in the paper for, excuse me. I hope you realize that law enforcement is not just a job. John Carter being here is not just a job. My husband has been in public service for over 32 years, 32 years. This is more than just a job for him. I hope you guys realize that we have literally uprooted our whole lives to be here to protect this community. He is allowed to do that, he will continue to do that whether we are here or we are anywhere else, that's just who my husband is. On top of that, as you all know, I just opened a new business in Crofton, it's doing amazing. I have been walking with open arms here, we like it here. On top of that, I have a high school here, he's two years left of high school. He's prospering here, he works part-time at the grocery store. So is it fair that just because of an opinion of a few is going to not only uproot everything in my life, but also the public safety of this community, which is clear? Are you guys actually representing the community, the citizens of Crofton, or are you guys pushing your own agenda? I would actually like you guys, if you could, put yourself in my husband's shoes. Put yourself in my shoes. Put yourself in my, in the shoes of my 16-year-old son, who has given up his everything to be here. And still in this hurtful moment when I feel like that everything that we've worked so hard for, including my husband, has just been ripped apart of us without our, without our say-so or even having to know what did we wrong? Why did my husband wrong?
Yeah, what did he do wrong?
Yeah, what did I do wrong? I have a great relationship with a lot of you here. Until now, what happened? I, the, the friendly waves and the getting out of the car if you see me at the post office just to say, hey, you need, how you doing? All of that is stopped. What have we done? And still I stand here with the utmost respect for you guys because that's just who I am. I'm asking you to not only give my husband that same respect, Officer Miller that same respect, but most importantly, the respect of the citizens of Crofton.
Is it right now?
Okay, I'll tell you a story, but I'm young. We have a farm, a farm up there for heartbreaks three. They got in someone, it's suicide. Okay? Audrey loves the kids. He could save one of them. And how much is one life worth to you guys? How much per thousand, saving it? Per thousand, how much? How much is one life? And all you guys did owe, I know you did owe for saving, protect your ambulance director, right? You, you took oath, right? You're a teacher, you took oath, protect the kids. And you, and you, you, you're a lawyer and you're protecting the kids when I'm a lawyer. And you, I think you were, you ran a, um, some new thing that is a long time and you protected, and you are grandfathers of kids. How much is it a life of one kid that these police officers saved? Ask yourself, are you going to be there to comfort those people that maybe a car hits them in the school? Are you going to comfort those parents? Are ya? Tell me. I need, I need to know, are you going to be, oh, I'm, I'm sorry? And you're going to say, I'm sorry, I love the, no, no cop, I love the cops though. So you guys responsible, any accident, you leave the cop, but you're responsible any accident because they could have stopped something. A mother lost a child, a first baseman won't be there at baseball, a quarterback is on the football field, won't be there. Guys like your sports, let's get realistic. A volleyball player won't be on the, on the court, let's get realistic.
We did just have a guy running through town with a gun.
Yes, I met him face to face and I don't appreciate, it's not my station ethic.
So just think of that, maybe one of your kids, maybe you might, won't be there. And you wish you had the cops there, I'm done.
I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Good, thank you. If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Any motion to adjourn? Most made by Pike, second member, who did adjourn. Bobberner?
So, a lot of what I'm hearing from people is that nobody knows the reasons of why we're doing this. Well, I gotta be pretty honest with you too, I don't know half of the reasons that this is going across. So if I was out there in that audience, one of my main questions would be, what did this man do to get put in this position? And another thing I would like to say is thank you, John, for getting that damn grant money for us.
Okay, we had a motion to adjourn, second.
Can I say one thing? Because you said that. I can talk, if I hate, but I'm always a gentleman. I talked with Senator K's office today and all the rumors about nothing happened there, his administrative assistant knows him well, believes in him, has worked with him, worked with the grant. And I asked you if you were on that phone call, you say you talked with a woman, that woman was still in her office. So no, you didn't speak with Senator K, but in fifteen minutes, I'm surprised you didn't talk to her. You said you were on the phone in fifteen minutes. So I don't know why you didn't know what.
Yes.
And Pikes?
Yes.
We are-